August 8, 2023, City Council and School Board Joint Work Session. It's my pleasure to welcome each and every one of you to this important meeting as your presence here today underscores your commitment to our students' education and the betterment of our community. We are here today to deliberate on ideas and strategies that will contribute to the holistic growth and development of our students, ensuring they receive the best possible education. We have dedicated the entirety of our joint meeting to focus on the facility's master plan. MGT Consulting are here and will be providing us with a presentation. One of our goals for the day is to ensure all members are up to speed with the work conducted so far. As such, MGT will be able to answer any questions from this group after the presentation. To help us move expeditiously through this process after the presentation by raise of hand or acknowledgement, I will recognize you if you have any questions or comments. We will then engage in breakout sessions and divide into four working groups. These units will identify the core actions that these governing bodies find important, as well as discuss the potential facility scenarios. We will come back together as a larger group to report out on those discussions. As we embark on this journey of exploration and dialogue, let us remain open to many perspectives and imaginative solutions. Let us commence this meeting with a sense of purpose, collaboration, and determination, knowing that every word spoken and every idea shared has the power to make a lasting impact on the lives of our students and the future of our community. Before we begin, I'd first like to offer the floor to School Board Chair Dr. Atul Gupta to deliver welcoming remarks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm allowed to say only one word, "welcome," and my attorney says he'll speak the rest of the things.
Well, thank you, Mayor Reed. Thank you, City Council members, for being here. I want to echo what Mayor Reed has said. We're undertaking very important initiatives here. Obviously, we're all coming together to work collaboratively, to come up with the best solution for our children and, in turn, their parents and our citizens. With that in mind, we want to keep open minds. Obviously, we have these different scenarios that we have proposed, and those are our starting points. So, we want to utilize those scenarios, utilize the information that we have at hand. If we need additional information, certainly want to ask for that information so we can make the best, most informed decision. It comes out as a win-win for all the parties and all the stakeholders involved. Certainly appreciate everyone's willingness to be here. There's been a lot of hard work already undertaken, and we appreciate that. We have some more hard work to undertake to get us to the finish line, and the finish line, we expect, will be a win-win for everybody and all of our stakeholders, first and foremost for our children. So, I appreciate that, Mayor Reed. Thank you, Council members, for being here, and we look forward to working hard and making it happen and getting the job done.
Thank you, Mr. Tros. And now, I will turn the note to Dr. Edwards. We'll introduce MGT Consulting.
Absolutely. Moving closer. Well, welcome, everybody. It has been a very productive two years of work with the facility study. A lot of what we're doing, some of it started with the Education Task Force, which had us look at both buildings and programs. And we had the facility study done by Dominion 7. There were a lot of community meetings last year with regard to that, and then we had a nice report out from them about the condition of our facilities. Part 2 was to look at program demographics and where we're going in terms of the future, and that's where MGT comes in to talk with us about Part 2. And once again, we have been out in the community, surveying and talking with folks and doing presentations, that has us here. So, tonight, what you're going to see is the culminating work of all of the community engagements, the surveys, the meetings with you all, the meetings with school board, to kind of push us in a direction which we are going to embark on. I am happy to say, and I want to say thank you to my administrative team, for the last two years of work. It has been very busy. You guys have been awesome in terms of getting all the data and working with both consultants and getting us here. And as I speak for our team, we are happy to turn this over to both School Board and City Council to guide us and make that final decision about our destination. To the public, this is the first of many meetings. We will not solve the world's problems tonight, but we will inch our way towards a solution that will determine our future, which will probably be a multi-stage approach. So, hopefully, tonight, we'll start to etch out what that multi-stage approach looks like. And I am now going to introduce our two wonderful guests, who are from MGT Consultants. Many of you have met them already, but I'm going to introduce them again. We have Dr. Lance Richards and his analyst, Monica Faraday. Did I do that right?
Faraday.
Oh, getting close. Turn it over to you. Yes, sir.
So, I already warned the television people, I am a drip. So, I got them to give me a portable mic. My former English teacher in me wants to stand behind the pupil to make sure at times that they're on task and that sort of thing. Maybe a little presence would make sure that they're focused, that sort of thing. So, I appreciate your indulgence and the camera people as I make my way around the room. This has been quite a process, I won't lie to you. We, I don't want to take away from things that we're going to present today, but Monica and I have been on the ground multiple days in your community. What a terrific community, by the way. I'm not blowing smoke either. This has been a, it's been an honor to be a part of this process, to be honest with you. So, let me just dive right in. I don't want to take anything away, and I don't want to take away from the time that you need to make some of your considerations moving forward. So, as was shared, I'm Dr. Lance Richards, and this is Monica Frye. I think it's close. I try my best, I'll be honest with you, with her last name. A little background, my background is I was a teacher. I was an elementary school principal. I was an assistant superintendent in charge of the curriculum and transportation. I'm a licensed bus driver. In case you get in a jam this evening, I can take the helm. And I was also a school superintendent in Indiana. And so, I've had a great opportunity in working with MGT to be on both coasts, east and west. I've been overseas, looking at schools, looking at districts, looking at divisions, and trying to help them make positive decisions for their school communities. That's the best part of this job, trying to help folks make positive school impact going forward. We are school people here to help school people. So, there's a lot of things going on here, and there's a lot of moving parts to consider. And I know you guys were given this PowerPoint in prior, but I guarantee you, this one was not in there. So, I hope that's not a violation of open door records or something. But there are a lot of moving parts here. There's a lot of things for you to consider. This isn't checkers. We need you to play chess. And I want to stress that Lynchburg is unique. And I know people say, "Oh, we're..." No, you guys are in a unique position going forward. And I want to applaud your school leadership and your community leadership in that there are many communities where we have visited where this conversation didn't take place, and we're back with you four years later, telling you basic how to dismantle your schools and to, where you're at 30% occupancy, and your building facility ratings are at 30%. And there are really hard decisions to make at that time. So, I applaud you and your efforts here. You're in a unique spot because, in this blended governance of schools, which is not always the case across the nation, you are taking on this responsibility now, and you have the resources to do that in terms of your economic development, in terms of your manufacturing base, all those things that are outside of the schools but within the school community that kind of can help you build a future for your students. The planning process, we met with school community leadership, we examined your inventory, we assessed the changes, because we did take a look at the assessment from last April. We looked at plan drivers. I want to stress this, and I apologize if I... We met with over 30 groups, and not to step on any toes, from both sides of the political spectrum, in terms of looking at your schools, looking at your community, looking at the school community as a whole. We had three community-based events, we conducted community surveys, we assessed needs. Those were brought back into the form of scenarios. We shared that through community feedback. You held open houses. You had yet one more survey. There's been a lot in behind this, trying to build some community awareness and community understanding of this process. The transparency in this process, as far as your schools and your governance, is to be applauded. And then, we came back to develop some considerations or recommendations for you. All right, so master plan drivers. Providing equitable program and support, connecting families and schools, optimizing your facilities in terms of their occupancy, in terms of staffing, addressing schools with urgent need, flexibility, sustainability. We looked a lot at programmatic needs in terms of CTE and STEAM and/or STEM here. You guys do a great job with this. Science, technology, engineering, arts, and math has been encompassed into your programs, and I applaud you for those efforts. But there can be more in those areas, to be honest with you, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Maintaining fiscal responsibility through operations and in transportation, that is critical. You know, you can hear, if you're a sports person, you watch the show, "Pardon the Interruption." They're always saying, "The answer to all your questions is money." And it is. But as a governmental entity on both sides, as the School Board and as the City Council, you have to be fiscally responsible and live within your means. And there are, as we well know, hiring challenges and challenges to student recruitment and retaining those students within your schools. All right, so just a quick snapshot of the city of Lynchburg, and this is from the 2021 population. This won't come as a surprise to any of you that have been involved with these processes. These are from your local, the Weldon Cooper Center, but you are a system that's in, you are a community that's in growth. Now, I have stated, for the record, that I don't understand why Lynchburg is not the capital of Virginia, given the geographic location, and I'll be first to sign that for you guys if you want that responsibility. Just seems perfect, doesn't it? So, you can tell them Lance said so. All right, so population by age, and this is an important factor. Many of you already know that kind of that Gen Z or that millennial group that you have that's kind of bumped up a lot with your downtown development, a lot through the housing that's available, but you've all, but you can also go back and see what you're, into your school age population, some of the challenges that are faced there in terms of that overall population, and a little bit of a drop here in that 15 to 19, back down to the 10 to 14. So, this is your population, but what you're not seeing is dramatic fall-offs here, and that's important. So, again, looking at your historical and projected enrollment by grade band. And we do a lot of different, we do historical, we do cohort, there are several things. If you came to one of our community events, we had a math lesson on this, and trying to find a projection of projected enrollment. Now, I want to stress that your enrollment by grade band, your enrollment projections are much like forecasting the weather. So, we know that if we're looking at, if we're trying to have a party a week from today, next, this coming Monday or Tuesday, that the seven-day forecast, you're a little bit squishy on. You're looking at it, there's trends there, you understand. As you get closer to that date, that three-day forecast, two-day forecast, one-day forecast, you feel pretty solid about, okay? So, what you have to do is kind of monitor those trend lines as you go forward. So, as we look at this, we feel really solid about our numbers for the next three to five years, in terms of where you are and where you're going. And I want to stress that we can see that you've got this number back, you know, 10 years ago. You're looking at about 8,600 students, you know. 20 years later, we're estimating you're going to be about 1,000 students less. And that is just the truth of the number and the data as we see. But as you see these numbers through your grade bands, there's not a precipitous fall-off. Yes, you're not falling off a cliff. We work with schools in places that are falling off cliffs, and they don't have a parachute. You're, again, I want to stress and applaud in the fact that you've got time to make a measured judgment. This process, this two-year process of looking at your facilities, looking at your programs, looking at your enrollment and where you are, can give you an opportunity to make a more considered judgment going forward. Again, you're not falling off any cliffs, but your trend line is slightly downward. The challenge of that is, I mean, let's look at this 6-8 number here. At 2,400 last year, we're guessing, you know, 2,355 or 2,355 at the tail end of this, as we move on, or, I'm sorry, 1,500 at the tail end of this, as you're moving down and forward. Those are the challenges of your enrollment as you bring all of these numbers forward. But there's not a precipitous decline at any given year. So, there is a challenge to be had there, but it's also something that you guys can address in, as you move forward. All right, community engagement. Through all these conversations, through our meetings in our communities and through our opportunities to meet with individual groups, these are kind of the conversations and the endorsements and considerations that came out. And you, everyone can read, so I won't go into depth in terms of the screen, but there were a lot of conversations about close to home or closer to home in neighborhood schools. And there was, when this topic was brought up, I wasn't sure, as a person from outside of the community coming in, what would the support be there? What would people think of that? And there seemed to be particularly strong support from every group that we spoke to about closer to home and looking and interviewing at neighborhood schools. Everyone is well aware of the transportation challenges that not only this division faces, but every district that we visit. Every, I just drove by a bus near my hometown, the yellow bus with the sign, "Now Hiring Drivers." Everybody has that sign out somewhere. There are currently 64 daily routes in your school system. You had 18 driver openings at the end of last year. I think you have about 15 driver opens to start the school year, although you do have some folks in your pipeline. But the average age of your drivers is over 60 years old. You're running about a million miles a year, and it costs about $5 a mile, all-in, to run a school bus, okay? So, I mean, that is just something people have to understand about the cost of running the big yellow limousines down the road. Career and technical education. We had a lot of conversations about these, and I think, kind of going back to the unique position, in talking to your economic development folks, in talking to city planners, in talking to city council members, in talking to school board members, everyone had a conversation about CTE. This is an area where, again, you're positioned to make exponential growth as a school division. You've got the manufacturers in your community that have openings, that need certain types of work readiness. It isn't they need to be able to put the widget in the widget and that kind of thing. They need to have the employability skills to come in and be successful and learn and relearn and retrain in these positions. And you all are in a very unique position to provide that in terms of your government structure and your manufacturing base and your employment base. Early childhood education. This one came up regularly in terms of just preschool, and there's a generous swath of public and private, or, I'm sorry, private and faith-based preschools in Lynchburg. However, there is a shortfall when it comes to preschool and early childhood education in your community. There were 184 applicants that were turned away last year, that remained on the waiting list, and as of today, at about 3 o'clock, your number was 200 for this year. So, there is a need in your community in terms of early childhood education. All right, alternative education. And this kind of encompasses a number of things, but there is some concern in terms of your community and alternative education. You know, people wish that this didn't have to be there. People wish that, you know, students can thrive and succeed in a regular classroom, in a regular building, in a regular setting every day. However, this is not a problem that's going away for your community, nor is it a challenge that's going away for other communities. And so, this alternative education, there's concerns about, you know, how to address the more extreme behaviors of students, to balance that concern without sending disruptive students back out onto the streets, that's the phrase that comes out. And these conversations centered around, you know, space limitations for your programming, repurposing facilities and potential additions to Ford Hill, or how you're going to house this program so that it can be a full-day program. Student discipline, it's fair to have this conversation about student discipline. It is a conversation in your community. And so, there's concern across the division. Teachers, administrators, parents, everyone kind of had a conversation about this and how to structure that, and those skills needed to move forward and help students be successful. Virtual education. I will spend a lot of time here, however, at this, you were leasing space. We had conversations about no longer leasing space and bringing those facilities, and that was during COVID, out of need. I believe that situation is going to change, still leasing, but at some point, those students should come home, come back into your footprint. And there was conversations about a hybrid model. There were a lot of concerns when this topic was brought up about students being at home and alone, and the social isolation that comes with that, and some of the technical challenges that come with virtual learning. STEM and STEAM. Again, this is an area where there are some great things going on in your division, and we encompass arts into that equation. Students who participated in these learnings had significantly higher level of interest and motivation in a school. It gives them connections. Not everyone's an athlete, and not everyone's a member of the band, and not everyone's got some of those other outside interests and plugins to your school district or your school division, but these things can generate interest and connection in a school and foster the next generation of innovators and entrepreneurs. We've kind of touched on this already, hiring and retention challenges. That's getting them and keeping them. And we know that the bus driver shortage is critical, and a lack of qualified candidates for broad swath of certified positions is well documented. I was in Missouri with another school system earlier in the, or late last week, and they are sure, you know, they're running short of getting certified teachers and filling all their positions. It is a nationwide challenge, and I'm not going to dwell on COVID or anything, but there are a lot of great teachers that basically retired early when they got into COVID and decided, "I just, I'm done." And we lost a lot of great teachers that could have stayed with us a little longer. So, you know, there's challenges with competitive salaries and workload and stress, a lack of perceived agency. However, I do know that you've got some alternative routes to Leishinger that are being implemented, and there are some very proactive efforts in trying to bring in, you know, teachers back into your division. But these challenges, these challenges are real, and they're reflected in your community but in other communities as well. Student recruitment and attention. I won't spend a lot of time on this. I want to say, though, you need to celebrate and share your successes, because there are a lot of terrific things that are going on in this, in your schools and in your division. You know, lean into those strengths. Your scores, your state scores, when you, as compared to benchmark districts, districts that are facing the similar demographic, demographics, similar student makeup, your scores are on top. So, it's important to understand that you are having success with students. And when you're looking at your schools and you're trying to keep those people engaged and families engaged and neighborhoods engaged, that climate, that engagement, those intervention strategies, those, that data-informed decision-making are all things that can help students land in your schools, so you can get them in to begin with and keep them here when they come. So, there were a lot of building, this is kind of, encompasses a lot of things in building level programs and initiatives. You've got, you've got go programs, you've got schools of innovation, you've got a lot of great things going on presently in your schools. It is time, though, to kind of reframe your listing of offerings, restructure that curriculum, kind of refresh the coursework, because what is cutting and innovative today is not necessarily cutting and innovating in five years. And if it's good stuff, if it's good for kids, it comes out of those buildings and goes back to those other schools that weren't there originally, and it's shared with all of your students. So, it's always important to kind of perhaps take an opportunity to refresh that, see how you want to structure that, especially if you follow through with the great leaps and bounds of CTE, because that is the future for your students. That is the future that we're seeing for students across the nation. And then, public-private partnerships. I want to hit hard on this, because this was a conversation, I'll be honest with you, I probably had more conversations around this than you might believe, and a lot of conversations with your council members and things. Going out into the community, having folks come in and partner with you. In the school district where I'm from, we partnered for pre-K. So, those folks were not my, as superintendent, they were not my direct employees. And so, it was with another service organization that also provided our after-school care, and they, you know, they do adult daycares and that kind of thing within the community. So, but we partnered with them for those programs to meet that need. You know, we always think about it in CTE in terms of manufacturing and those kind of things, and those internships, and building out that infrastructure, but there are a lot of opportunities in the fine arts and other paths of interest, and you would be amazed at how many people really want to help and be there and be a part of the program. So, I think, I think as a division, as a community, I think this is an area where you're going to have to lean in heavily in order to meet the needs. All right, programing alignment. Now, there's a lot of words on this page, but I want to stress what this talks about, really, is reconnecting schools, looking at what you're offering at your elementary schools to make sure that those paths carry through at STEAM, at the middle school and CT and the high school, looking at your schools of innovation, looking, thinking, rethinking perhaps your extended calendars, defining level of interest for your program. There can't be any sacred cows in this, in this process. We have to examine everything. We have to look at all choices, because there's a, as a community, you have a fundamental responsibility in maintaining your facilities and bringing, and making sure your students have the best facilities that you can provide as a community for their education. On the school side of it, you have to make sure that you have the right programs within those facilities that are best meeting the needs of the students going forward. So, I know there's a, you're looking at sixth-grade academies, I applaud you for those efforts. You know, potential pathways for your middle schools and those kind of things. School-specific recommendations to get community buy-in and to generate community interest. And then, into your high schools, your investments in CTE, those strategic partnerships, and you can, again, there's arts and athletics out there. A lot of folks want to buy in and help with athletics. They get a banner, they get their name on the scoreboard and those kinds of things. But I'm telling you that we've seen across the nation, manufacturers and other folks would like to have their banner in a classroom and helping in those areas. Again, we talked about pre-K, I won't beat that drum much more, but your alternative programming to support larger alignment in the division. Where does your alt-school programming fit in? Where do these, outside of the normal pathway toward graduation and future success, how do they work? You know, your restorative centers, I know that's an area that's expanding and you're working really hard on. I applaud you for that. You're ahead of the curve on that versus many other systems where, and we've not talked about, a lot about adult education, but providing opportunities, because you are a joint body, providing opportunities for folks to relearn and retrain and have success outside of the regular school day. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to go through this next part pretty quickly, because this is a synopsis of what you saw in your report from the plan of 2022. But I've kind of bundled this a little differently, so you can see it in a more concise manner. We're going to talk about capacity and utilization. We're going to talk about the suitability of the facilities and the building condition. Overview. The high school efficiency rate is about 76%. The assessments, though, your two high schools are in really nice shape all in all. And, you know, EC Glass is a testament as to what you can do with an older facility and then the efforts made to keep, keep it to be top-notch. That is a tremendous facility, and you should be applauded for your efforts there as a community. Your middle school efficiency, a little higher within the facility assessment at 81. Elementary's is 80, facility assessment is 70, and that's really why we're talking about elementaries, okay? And then, if you go on down through there, you've got two schools that are under 70% utilized. You've got four schools, and this is something in terms of right sizing your district. You've got four schools under 225. Now, sometimes those facilities, that's all they can house, okay? But there are inefficiencies in super-small schools. It costs the same amount of money to run a small school from just an operational standpoint as it does a school twice that size. And so, those schools are very small in terms of what we see in terms of current education trends. Suitability scores range from 66 to 95, facilities 62 to 97, and utilization 65 to 92. And those are a lot of numbers on a page, and so, I'll try to clarify that for you. The one thing I want to stress here is capacity and utilization. The goal is not 100%. That's the stress. That 80 to 94 is kind of that sweet spot. When things go above that, the hallways get crowded, you can't get kids through lunch, your gym space isn't adequate to meet the needs of your physical education program, your playgrounds get crowded, you have difficulty managing the herd as we make our way through the building when you grow above those, that percentage. And then, suitability, that's rated on what we consider the standard 60, 70, 80, 90 scale in terms, and that's that functionality of a facility. And then, building condition is kind of, you know, that facility in terms of its building envelope, in terms of the roof, the windows, the walls, the doors, the floors, those kinds of things, okay? So, and your division averages, again, right here, your utilization rate, your middle school totals, as well as your elementary totals. And so, and so, this is a chart, then, it basically encompasses every school. And I know you've seen this before. I know folks in our community may not have seen this, and I apologize that we're kind of moving through this so quickly, but I wanted to give you more of a, kind of a concise visual of this in terms of your charting. I will note, the average age of your facilities, I believe, is over 65 years old. You have some of the oldest buildings in Virginia collectively. We see this other places as well. The challenge with older buildings is, is they, they're, just the infrastructure, the mechanics of those buildings need to have a little more consideration at times in terms of plumbing and those kinds of things. I think if you look down there, RSP, the original construction's 1926. Beautiful building, though. All right, and just a map of schools. A lot of folks don't really truly understand where the school lies within geography, the geographic, easy for me to say, geographic locations of given schools. You've got, you know, Paul Monroe on the top up here, and you've got Bass off to the side, and Heritage, you know, you don't think of Heritage being where it is in terms of proximity unless you kind of look at the overview of the map and how it is oriented and the orientation of where the schools are. All right, so quickly, I'll just do a quick flash through the individual schools, because I want to kind of hit this number. You'll notice your high school trend, a trend of a loss of 59 over five years. That's not enough to really change programming, that's not enough to really absorb teachers. You could have it swing the other way of 59 and not hire a person and not change your program as well. Heritage, similar, similar, the enrollment's a little smaller. the enrollment's a little smaller at Heritage, again, a similar trend line. And I want to also talk about utilization here, though, because utilization of a facility is how you're using the facility, how are you using the space. So if you bring in a counselor, if you bring in an outside program, sorry, I'm not holding the mic right. If you bring in an outside program, you bring OTP, occupational therapy, physical therapy, if you bring in outside counselors, we, we ran into a situation a lot of times post-COVID, and we're bringing additional mental health resources, and we're bringing in other tutors, that when they come into the facility, they have to have real estate, and that changes the utilization of your facility as a result. Because if you take a classroom out of the inventory, because you're going to put counselors in there, then the, the capacity of that building goes down by, say, 25 kids, but the utilization then goes up, because you've removed those students in that space, that square footage from your utilization. I would tell you, and I would contend, that as you expand CTE, that the utilization of these facilities will increase, because you're going to need those labs, you're going to need that technical space, you're going to need the additional learning space in order to provide those programs. And when you provide those programs, that's going to take up real estate, it's going to take up square footage. Similar with your middle school in terms of the utilization and then STEM programs or STEAM programs, but you'll notice your trend lines there, minus 21, minus 23, minus 23. Nothing dramatic, but you can see that for the, the trend line going forward is, is a slight, ever-so-slight decrease in student population. Similar story for your elementaries, and you'll notice the enrollment at Bass is 178, it's kind of below that 250. A trend line, just a loss of nine, though. Bedford Hills, 20. Darrington, again, 162 students in that facility, a trend line of minus nine. Building score there of 67, 65% efficiency. You've got Lincoln at 22, Miller at minus 11. Miller's also a smaller facility, Monroe at 20, minus 20, and RSP at minus 24, and going forward. So, again, nothing dramatic, you, I mean, in some of the schools, if you lose, say, 22 students at Lincoln Elementary, the challenge of that is, is they're not all in one grade. So if you lost 22 kids in fourth grade, you might be able to absorb a fourth grade teacher. But likely to happen there is you're going to lose, you know, two kids out of, three kids out of, of a given grade, and that really doesn't change your overall structure. Perrymont, similar numbers. Sandusky, notice the building score for Sandusky is at 62. Sheffield, minus 13, a little better building score, though, at 80. And I've included Hutcherson here, because it's kind of a unicorn. Their utilization, their efficiency is 111%. And that's because they've got an enrollment of 184 in a facility that's supposed to house about 166. Now, I've got a five-year enrollment trend there of zero, because they are putting in as many kids as they can and would take more in if they had the square footage to do so. All right, so key recommendations and considerations. Again, the goal is not 100%. Above, above 90 is going to be, begin to feel crowded and limited in flow and process. And again, I've mentioned square footage for folks that, that come into your facilities, and, and if you're going to provide additional services for those students. All right, so quickly, and this is going to be the core of your conversation, so I won't spend a lot of time here, but I want to note, if you remove portables, your, your school systems for elementaries improves to 80%. So here's the good news. The good news is, your buildings are not dramatically underutilized in any way, shape, or form. The good news is, right now, your sky demographically isn't falling, okay? If you, if, just the elimination of portables by itself takes you up to 82%. And now, we do believe you need to expand your CT opportunities, if you haven't caught on to that already. You do need to improve your elementary buildings. It's 70 and going, you know, they're not going, here's the problem with kicking a can down the road. At some, or, let's do, let's do a different analogy. Here's the problem with kicking a ball down the road. At some point, you got to pick up the ball, and the farther you kick it, the heavier it gets. To the tune of about 4% inflation each year. If, if, then that would be low in terms of construction costs. So at some point, you've got to pick that up, and you've got to carry. And I, again, I applaud you as a community for making those efforts today and not waiting another three to five years to make those, to, to have this conversation as a community. It's a, it's a critically important conversation. Again, scenario one, I, I won't, your utilization on this one jumps to 89%. There was 70, 70% support after the open houses and all of the additional surveying that we did. This one involves the conversion of Heritage in terms of that alternative education. We kind of put that out there as an option, so people could begin to consider those choices. It does include a rebuild of Sandusky, the closure of Ford Hill, and the renovation of some of the elementary schools, including in other improvements. 70% support on that one. Scenario two, utilization jumps to 84%. This one's a close or convert, Darrington, in, in terms of what you decide going forward in terms of your preschool needs, a renovation of Lincoln, Paul Monroe, and the elementaries, and then just basic, base-level elementary building, building improvements. Scenario three, utilization plus or minus 84. Now, this is with expansion. So in scenario three, if you're closing Miller and you're closing Sandusky, you don't really have, you don't have enough square footage and enough classroom space in your other facilities to accommodate all those students without expansion. But you do have some efficiencies of operation through the expanded schools. And then in scenario four, this one, your utilization jumps to 98%. I would, now, I want to, I want to stress this about your scenario. Your scenarios, this utilization number is just for that scenario. It does, it isn't included with the utilization number of closing the portable. So this number with portables taken out, also removed, this number is at, is at 100%. And so, again, the target for utilization is not 100%, but we wanted you as a community to understand what that would look like if you closed this many facilities and shifted. This also involves expansion of certain schools, improvements and renovations of others. So, the number, so the utilization you have there, the utilization numbers and the support numbers, you've been given this in advance. You can see the operational savings by 2030. You've got estimated 10-year capital costs that are there for both of these, top being full renovations, bottom being safety and maintenance with the required expansions in order to accommodate those students. Next steps.
Okay, thank you. Well, what we are going to do is, we will break out into four breakout groups. We're going to spend a good amount of time on pretty much the last couple slides, slide 30 or 31, which are the core actions, and then also the individual scenarios. We have provided for you on the breakout table some backup information that may also help you. There's some financial information. The school board had a finance committee meeting, so we presented in detail what's behind the numbers, so you have a summary of the numbers, but you can see what those health and safety costs are as well. Our goal is to do with you, the two governing bodies, what we have done with ourselves and with the community, is to try to gain some consensus around those core actions. Now, you heard Dr. Richards say, this is something that they've heard in the community, the community, the community, the community being school folks and parents, family members, community groups. We want to hear from you all now, what are your thoughts about those core actions, and where, and how those core actions determine where we go. And then the second part is on the individual scenarios. Now, I will remind everybody, the scenarios, I like to call them guides, because they give you a foundation from which to start having a conversation about, I like the idea of renovating, or closing, or consolidating, or converting, maybe not that school, maybe a different school, but at least gives us a, a starting point for doing that. At the end of this, this is the first of many conversations, we want to kind of square up on what do we agree on as a governing body. And that is very important when we have a very tough decision like this, to really sit down and say, what are those areas of convergence that are going to get us there? It's very easy to stand and say, this is where we differ. But if we can line up priorities that we say, well, you know what, we agree that we need to be moving in this direction, so that's part of why we're going to break out into small breakout groups, because we want to get to the areas of conversion. I am, before we go to breakout groups, because you heard a lot from Dr. Richards, I am going to allow a little Q and A on just what you heard. Let me be clear, let me get my teacher robe, teacher hat. Just what you heard, if there's something on the slides that we need to clarify before you get to breakout groups. We are not solving a scenario problem in this small Q and A, all right? Dr. Gupta, you have your hand up. Yes, sir.
Would you like to share with the group your deadlines, you know?
Yes.
The timeline.
I'm, I'm going to get to that, too. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But I want to make sure that we all understand what, what we're going to do, and I also want to make sure that the community understands what we're going to do, because the community gave a lot of feedback, and I applaud you and thank you all for getting us to, these are the core actions, these are things we hold dear, and this is what we think we, we can accomplish. Timeline, oh, yes, Ms.
Um, I wanted to ask, is, are there some of your projections based on the?
Wait, 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 hold on. If you're going to ask him a question, I'm going to, I'm actually going to bring him back up just for, for that. But let me just, let me get to the, let me get to the core. Timeline, all right. Now, we've, we've been doing this process, we actually started before the pandemic. We had moved into the facility study piece, and the pandemic just sort of blew it up for us. But we're back. So for the last two years, we've done the facilities, assessment of all the buildings, we've done all the programming, we've even done some things with unitary status, which I can also go into once we get into the breakout groups. That's been two years in the making, and now we're at decision-making time. So if we're going to have what I would call, this is a multi-phase approach, so phase one of what we do fall of 2024, right? We are in fall of 2023, that is 12 months away. Fall of 2024, if we're going to make decisions about consolidation, if we're going to make decisions about closure, program changes, converting schools to pre-K, we need to know those sooner than later, because on the other side of all of those division, decisions are children who are impacted, staff who are impacted, families who are impacted, buildings and facilities who are, that are impacted, possible programs, transportation routes that have to be redone. We can't have this decision made in March and say, Dr. Edwards, make it happen for August. That's just not going to happen. That's not fair to our community, it's not fair to our families, it's not fair to our teachers, and it's not fair to you, actually, to have a rush plan. So we need to know those going into budget season, because I'm sure my counterpart will say, that's all great, Dr. Edwards, but I need to know how to have, how to plan for it. What does a long-range financial plan look like? What does phase one look like as we build the budget for 2024? So, today is August 8th. My anticipated deadline for my staff, and I'll let Mr. Bender jump in there, is by November 1st. By November 1st, it would help us tremendously if we have the fuzzies of we're going in this direction. This is going to be what phase one of fall. And then no one can accuse us of kicking a can down the road, because by November 1st, we at least know what fall of '24 is going to look like, possibly fall of '25, it might morph and change a little bit, but we can get in the get-ready plan. Why by November 1st? Well, by November 1st is when we start developing the budgets for next school year. By November 1st is when we start meeting and talking about long-range plans. By December, the governor starts to put out a budget for next school year, so that's going to impact us. Then we have two weeks off, and it's January, and we're off and running. You are also developing a city budget simultaneously as we're developing a school budget. So, it's a big job for all of us, but it's one we saw coming, so we're ready for, for the task. But that is the date that I would like, this Crystal's wishlist, if I can put that up there. Mr. Bender, does that timeline, or what your timeline is for your?
Uh, that largely jives. Donna Witt has made me start budget earlier, so it's usually in October that we're usually getting started, so we're, we're right, right in track.
Okay, okay. Okay, so what I want to do is take no more than 10 minutes, and I'm going to ask my, my staff to kind of help out with that. And remember, this is questions about anything on the slides that you might need clarity for. Before I go to a breakout table, I just need to get clarity on this. All right, Ms. Lowry.
All right. Are the projections based on somewhat, on the businesses and colleges in this area that are fairly, on that fairly steady line? Because, like, I personally noticed this summer, when usually when colleges are out, the streets are empty, but they stayed full this summer, all summer long. So people are moving away less. Is that what, on the historical and projected enrollment by grade band, you were focusing, was any of that part of your focus?
We use, we use a program called Lightcast that brings in census and local data into this, this database. So a lot of that would be dependent upon where the, in terms of census data, like if your Liberty students count in your local census data, those items actually would factor into our estimations in terms of our data. So I don't know that we have the means of attracting folks that would move in and move out in, in that tight of a window. We're using broader numbers that are, that are, that are in our larger databases, and that are reported back into, into these data warehouses.
And the other question was, and I'm just not understanding, what is a portable classroom?
It's a trailer.
We still have trailers?
I'm learning how to just trailers.
I have a district that likes to call them bungalows, if you want to, if you want to go with bungalow.
All right, thank you.
You don't, I, to be fair to your division, you do not have a large number of them. That's why that percentage of utilization does not go up dramatically with, with the, the removal. But, you know, as a consultant, I would tell you, with the, the resources of your community, no student should be taught in a trailer.
All right.
Especially because the partitions or walls are very thin, and you can hear the other classrooms very often.
Can I just remind everybody to please just raise your hand or say something, so I can acknowledge you for questions, please. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Feraldi, I know you had a question.
You said the 2% adjustment, that would be, sorry, you said the 2% adjustment for the mobile classrooms, if that's taken out, that's a 2% gain.
Yes.
Does that apply for every category that you've put forward, or just the one? You had, you'd made a statement about that at the end of your.
Each of those categories have their own, so you would take the, like, the scenario one and add the 2%?
So it'd be for each one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Jalil?
Do we know what families tend to do with their little children when the buildings are at capacity or exceeding capacity?
I'm, I'm not sure.
The pre-K, there's 200 in wait.
Oh, oh, well, our pre-K program, and Renee Anderson is our pre-K coordinator, Polly Smith, who is our pre-K principal, neither are here, but part of our pre-K program is to work collaboratively with local pre-K and also Head Start. So sometimes we'll place kids in our program, we'll help place them in Head Start, we'll help, help place them in local pre-Ks. But other than that, that's when we start to get a waiting list. And I'm not sure what families do if they don't have affordable pre-K.
Councilman Hugson?
Some of the capacity and utilization numbers, I really kind of somewhat question some of them. I recognize standards have changed, but I've been here for a long time, and, and not too terribly long ago, these capacity numbers were a whole lot more. They did it based on a maximum and a functional. And so when you're looking at functional, maybe use a different word of optimal, but we're, we're comparatively, it's down several thousand from where it used to be. And I, I recognize programs can change. So I wouldn't be so concerned as we get together in different groups to be that far removed from the 100% functional capacity, because the 100% functional as opposed to an 80% or whatever numbers you had in there, you're already lowering it down from the maximum capacity. Some of these middle schools originally had a maximum capacity of 1225. Now they're at 580. That was maximum, okay? Granite, programs change, you have different things. Maybe it's now 1100, or 1200, or 1,000, or 800. So getting close to that optimal capacity at 100%, otherwise you're kind of constantly moving. Secondly, some of the scores, you know, the, the functionality of these buildings, several years ago, I remember we heard that we had Sandusky Middle School, that was a fantastic building, but that got torn down and a brand-new building was built in its place. Not necessarily because of the building was obsolete, but because of, you know, the ability to fund another building. So some of these numbers, like, for example, Bass Elementary, I just went through there the other day. What a fant, that's a gem. But on this one, it shows that it's a, a low C.
I get it.
You know, so, so with that, I'm just, I would be a little, you know, I'm sure that they got fantastic, odd. You know, so with that, I'm just, I would be a little, you know, I'm sure that they got fantastic auditorium, a great gym inside, a great field to play outside, lots of things. So when we're doing this as our group, obviously, we hear from the consultants sometimes, and Christian knows very well, how assessments or assumptions, when those assumptions change, it can get you clear off of long things. So anyway.
Was there a question, though, for?
I think those are comments, and maybe you can, you know, because he did mention all those things in his presentation. I just would probably, you know, look at those a little bit more askance, I think, or a little, a little more detailed and get us closer when we're looking at our projections. Getting closer to the optimal of 100%. There's nothing wrong with that, because again, that's below, so.
Well, I would like to hear your response about Bass. If you'd like to speak to that.
We did not, MGT did not do the facility assessment or the utilization capacity. But I wanted to say one thing about the 70 at Bass. You can walk into a building, and it'd be terrific, and it'd be a 70 because of the roof life. So those are, those things are done as a percentage. So if you have, if you have an HVAC, let's say that you redid everything at Bass. I'm going to make up a number. 25 years ago, it got a new roof, new HVAC, new lighting and all those things. Well, all, here's what we all know about a 25-year-old roof on our house. We're going to have to replace it. So that, that percentage, that 70% is reflective of the fact that it's going to need a new roof. It may not need it today, but you know that to bring it back up to 85 or 90% as a facility score, it needs a new roof because the roof has aged out or the mechanics have aged out. And so those are the challenges. A lot of buildings you can walk into, and they look fantastic, and you're like, oh. Or you spent $20 million on it, and the parent walks in the next year and goes, well, I don't see that you did anything here. Well, you did a roof, you did HVAC, you did all those behind-the-walls things and below-the-floor things that impacted the value of the facility. And I, but to his other comments, I really can't address those.
Okay. Hold on once again, Mr. Jalil. Anybody over here that hasn't asked a question yet? Council missions?
So you guys didn't do the facility assessment scores, but do we have the data or whatever the information is that caused it, like you're saying?
You got that last.
Something might need to be a roof. What's that?
You got, you as a division received that a year ago, a year and four months ago. Is that something that we can get a copy of?
Sure. That was from, for the public who's listening, that the first consultant that we worked with was Dominion Seven, and they did the building facilities assessment. They went in all the buildings and did all of that and gave a presentation to the school board. And I think we had a joint meeting with Dominion Seven as well as City Council.
A lot of different people, I think, is here.
Yeah. And one question I also have, the demographic study, the one that you emailed me. Are you familiar with that, the demographic study, as far as like where the kids live and all that stuff? Is that something that factored into your?
It, it does not, it did not, it really wasn't part of this report specifically. We would be involved and assist in terms of if you decide to go with closer to home and that kind of thing. That's where we would clean that data in terms of geolocating the students, where they live. Your division has some information. We know a large number of students currently live in proximity to Bass that go to Heritage, for example. And so, so you internally have some of that information. That was not specifically a part of this report.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Yeah, I'm just, there's some stuff here in these maps that kind of throws me off a little bit. Because when you look at Bedford Hills, you see a heat map of students that live near Bedford Hills, right, Boonsborough area. When you look at Paul Monroe, same thing, you see a heat map of students that live up there that are attending. And when you look at EC Glass, you've got high school students all over up in the Boonsborough area. But then when you look at Lincoln Middle School, where are all the middle school students that live in Boonsborough? And that's just something that kind of popped out at me, and I'm kind of curious as to why that is and where they are.
Dr. Carter?
It may be more of a comment, if I'm allowed to say that. I know years ago, the, well, when I go into a school, and I know that sometimes from looking at some of these studies, it's saying that it's underutilized. But when I walked into schools, I saw that they were using closets, hallways, in every place possible for offices and for space. Because now we have several ancillary services that we never had before. So if we're comparing prior years to now, we have more counselors. We even have school counselors, and we have like social workers that need a space. And we also have the Title I program workers. So there are more people that need offices and space in these programs, and they can't be shared because of the privacy of the students. So we need to keep that in mind. So if we're looking at 100%, we have to make sure that everyone has space for the students and for the students that are being served.
Other questions? Mr. Jalil?
Sir, are you saying that your percentage such as 70% is based on 20 years in the future?
No, I'm saying what it would, generally, these facilities scores are indicative of what it would take. You would have to spend 20% of the value of that building to bring it up to a 90% facility score. Because of the cost of the, of the major systems that would be needed, or at the end of their cyclical life.
Right. And you've evaluated when those are going to be for each school?
Yes. That would have been part of the facilities reports that you received in April, last, a year ago, April.
I wasn't here.
Right, right.
And just for the public, all, any document that we presented at a school board meeting is still available live in Board Docs. And I've been trying to make sure that you all get any of the older information. The same thing with City Council. If there's something that we have that you need, like I think we shared the heat maps. That came from Dominion Seven with everyone. And we do try, for the public, we do try to make sure if one council person or if one board member asks for material, we send it to everybody. So everybody's making an informed decision with the same information. So we'll, we can, if there's anything at the end of today, we'll make sure between Mr. Bender and I that you all get it.
And if I may echo, the numbers that you had for the 10-year facility costs, those then were based on calculations that were a part of that report to you about a year ago, April. So that's how, we didn't just pluck those numbers. We went back to the report.
Dr. Edwards, it's been 10 minutes, so you want to go ahead and break?
Yes, absolutely. So before we move, I just want to make sure that as we go forward with Phase One, Phase Two, multi-year phase, the one thing that we all need to understand and the community needs to understand, even if today we just decide, I'll pick a random number, we only want four schools, four elementary schools to stay open. Those four elementary schools are still going to need a long-term maintenance plan. They don't stay open and stay fresh and stay up to date by themselves. So even a status quo plan has a cost to it. A four-schools-only plan has a cost to it. No matter what we do for our children, there will be a long-range cost. And I'll say this, I've said this several times. It's cheaper to change oil in a car regularly than to let it go and then have your engine fry and have to replace the engine. We want to make sure that our plans, our multi-year plans, are looking at the regular oil changes that our buildings need and not waiting until our systems are so corrupt and so miss, have not had the regular maintenance. So as we decide this, we also need to be looking at that. The other thing for just community, we are talking about elementary schools, but we have five secondary schools. And in the next 10 to 20 years, guess what they also are going to need? Maintenance. They may need a renovation. They're going to need repair. They're going to need a roof. They're going to need chillers, all of that. So what this council has to do, and I want you to appreciate the difficulty of the decision, is not only balance what do we do for elementary in the right now, but how do we weave that in and plan while we also keep track of what our middle schools and our high schools are going to need in the future as well? So on the back of your name tags is a number which corresponds to one of the four tables in the back. And we have strategically placed the mayor, the vice mayor, the chair, and the substitute vice chair for today since Dr. Day is ill and not with us.
Voluntaried.
Voluntaried, there we go, at those tables to also help. I will have team members, Dr. Wodoka, Ms. Pugh, Dr. Brown, and Ms. Cruz will assist me in kind of taking you through the activities. So we'll give you a moment to get to the back, and then we'll talk about the activities. For our viewing audience, we're going to have to orchestrate a little different so that we can speak to the viewing audience as well. So we're going to have to do a little bit of moving, but that's fine. What we're going to do is have a quick report out from the facilitator. And then we'll have the facilitator, if there's anybody at the table that wants to add and share what happened. So Amy, I'm going to have you turn a little bit more, because you're either this camera with Scott or that camera with Shannon, right? Am I doing that right? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Table number one. Just quickly, scenario one, some of the pros, just allowing rezoning some schools will allow us to move different programs to different locations. And I think that was some of the pros in some of these. It allows access for Fort Hill Community students to some of the programs at Heritage High School. Cons, and you'll see this repeated, some of these is the cost was too high, not enough savings. And one of these, you know, this is overall, some of the cons is that if we're renovating schools, the disruption to learning is, could be there, depending on the timing of the renovations. Overall, I think some of the things we talked about at the table were closer-to-home zoning was good, a positive. Allowing to renovate schools with high needs was also a positive. One of the pros for scenario two was the utilization rate stayed within that 80 to 90%. And there was a $3.7 million savings, but it was not the best return on investment. One of the cons that I do want to talk about for number two, scenario two, is that we talked a lot about closing Darrington Elementary School and how that impacts that Darrington community that's close to that school, and it has negative optics. That's, we talked about that a lot at the table. One of the things, and this should be moved over here to the, to the pros, is that smaller class sizes are better for students that are experiencing some trauma. Three was, also had a higher savings at $4.4 million. One of the things we talked about with, in particular, TC Miller in scenario three was it would be an opportunity to rezone those students to schools that have auditoriums because they have a really good theater program there. And TC Miller does not have an auditorium. Talked about some cons here of closing multiple schools being very difficult and that the cost of renovating four schools was very high. Number four seemed to be the best return on investment, but it did have a high utilization score. And it was the scenario that was not as well-received by the community. So did I miss anything from the table? Awesome.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Pugh. We're going to go to the back here to Dr. Wodoka.
Good evening, everyone. I think the handwriting award goes to our table, I think. Easy to read. Ms. Lowry, I need some help developing that. So on scenario one, our pros is that we like the idea of a new Sandusky. It provides some opportunities for pre-K. It also doesn't close some of the more traditional sort of neighborhood schools. However, it does close the, or it makes not available to elementary schools, the only elementary sort of school sort of south, most south side of the city, or the most south side of the city where most of the development is. It's also too expensive as well. Number two, there are small class sizes, particularly at Darrington. But it would also, the pro is that it would impact the least, the number of students, the least number of students, and not as expensive. But it does close a historic school, and there would be a lot of community pushback, we feel like, and not nearly as much savings as well. On number three, there is the most sort of good mix between savings and costs. It does close Sandusky, which is one of our least good physically, buildings as far as our physical state goes. And it does provide an option for TC Miller to be pre-K. And our, sort of our cons, the only thing we came up with was that it's sort of low support in the community. And number four, it saves the most, and it provides options to convert to pre-K as well as there are lots of variables, which I think, which we think is a good thing. On the opposite side, though, some of those variables are kind of a con, too. And people really don't like this option in the community, particularly closing Paul Monroe. And this, again, lots of variables that we need to consider. As we had. Ms. Cruz is next.
So our group consensus, there's a lot of shared ideas from the first two tables. So that's a good thing about going in the spot. We talked a lot about the rezoning and staying close to home and the need for that. Paul Monroe, I'll work backwards. Paul Monroe was a huge topic at our table about it being such a great school and scores being so well-received and just a good school community. So that was probably the least received, as well as Sandusky Elementary being closed. That was a big push, because that is a true neighborhood school. So those are some of the, some of the additional components from the first two groups that were talked about. But some of the pros, working down, rezoning close to home, that was a pro. And Fort Hill, recognizing that Fort Hill Alternative School needed a bigger space just for expansion. So that was a pro. Some of the cons in that area, construction concerns, that was something that was brought up because there's a lot of construction that goes on in that Leesville Road area already. So those construction concerns for those families within the community after they've already been through a whole lot already, that was one of the topics talked about at our table as well. And talking about the maximum distance and the miles from school was another consideration. For option two, there are needs for renovation already as a pro. But the close-to-home concern with the close of Darrington, that continued to come up as well. Three, consideration of other schools to attend. That gives you a few more options for programmatic pieces and components. And a con for three, which was not something that we spent a ton of time on, but Bass has a year-round calendar. So if we were to consolidate or do anything from that component, have to consider what that would look like to push students into that school as well. And again, four renovations to consider, building capacity and consolidations could be a pro for some of the schools for programmatic purposes. Closure of Desi and Heritage Elementary already being at its full capacity and where we would send some of those, some of those students through rezoning purposes. Thank you so much. I worked hard. I really appreciate you noticing that for me.
All right. And we'll go ahead and wrap things up here over here. We did quickly reach consensus that we didn't necessarily have a consensus on which scenario worked the best. But we did find a lot of consensus on some of the pros and cons. So for scenario one, I think for all the scenarios, just in interest of time, I think rezoning close to home was a huge pro for a lot of us. Cons on scenario one was rebuilding Sandusky, the closing of Fort Hill, and the conversion of Heritage Elementary, and also had the least operational savings. I think Councilmember Missions had some ideas about public-private partnerships and what we could do with some of the buildings. And so it didn't necessarily fit with that, that idea. The, and two, closing and converting Darrington Elementary, that being a smaller school, that was a pro for option, scenario two and four. But also scenario two for the cons, it wasn't as comprehensive of a plan and it had a hard time rectifying the impactfulness of that option. And then for scenario three, closing Sandusky Elementary School for items mentioned above, is also another area that we felt was a con. Any other comments from a group?
So I just got to say how awesome it was to be here with the king of practicality, our chairman of the school board, Atul Gupta. It was great just having him involved in this conversation and a lot of the things that we discussed. But you just mentioned the closer convert, TC Miller was left off of there. That was one of the pros that we had for scenario three. It's in a landlocked spot. There's not really much we can do to expand that building. It's a small building. And then when you actually look at the demographic report, it's also the lowest number of in-zone attendance of students from the demographic report, and they don't have an auditorium. I know that was brought up from scenario one. And we need to take those kids with that great program and put them somewhere where they've got an auditorium so that they actually have the resources they need for the program. That was that. And then Darrington, I know that's probably a hot topic, right? But also, it's, it's, there's not a lot of kids in that zone, when you look at the actual data, that attend that school. And then there's also a small number of kids in that zone, period, in that district, that live there and might attend elsewhere. So that gives us an opportunity. Because I can tell you right now, I'm going to fight tooth and nail to make sure we don't sell any of these buildings, to do a public-private partnership of some sort, to actually survey the Darrington community and find out what's the best fit for that building. Because it's an anchor building, it's an anchor of that community. Let's find out what the greatest needs is there. Is it workforce development to try to get people jobs? What is it? That's what we should look into. So that's where we were with that. Is there anything else I missed?
Thank you. And again, what I do like about this activity is there was lots of common ground, and that's where we are always best to start with common ground. But there's also lots of creativity here, some other ideas, some things. There's passion, there's passion back there, hey, families and community members, there's passion about our schools, which we know. The one thing we do know that the decision is difficult, it's tough, but together we can make it through. And we have to look at what's on the other side. What are we gaining when we finally make a decision? What is going to be better for children, families, our community? So we have to stay focused on that. Sometimes when it's a closure or consolidation, it can feel like a loss, and it is. I'm not even going to go there. But it can also have a gain. And if we take yesterday's theme from our convocation, which is you can choose how you respond, react, you can find the joy in almost anything, you can believe that things are possible, and through collaboration, which we saw today, we can start to narrow our focus. What you guys did for me today was sort of narrow the focus on what's important. And I know close-to-home zoning is important for us. And in beginning, we talked a little bit about CTE, we have some ideas for that. The tougher parts will come, so you got to bear with me. Meeting one of many, right? And I think we should give ourselves a round of applause for how productive we were in meeting one. What we're going to do is transition back to our regular seats. If you would leave the card on the table, because we want to make sure that we capture this for the public. And many of, thank you public for just indulging us in a classroom setting and a conversation, but we will make sure that there are pictures of everything here available to you as well so that you can see where we came up with.
Okay. Everybody seated? Thank you. Thank you to the school board and my fellow members of City Council for our continued collaboration. Our efforts here today have highlighted the significance of working together to provide the best possible education for our students and to create an environment that fosters their growth and development. Dr. Gupta, would you like to say a few closing remarks?
I'm going to yield again to my lawyer.
Happy to do so. I tell you, I'm excited about the process here. The thoughts that were shared amongst the group and the, were fantastic. Difficult decisions to be made going forward. I like some of the out-of-the-box thinking. Councilman Missions brought up a couple of those things. At our table, we had some of those things. It's a starting point, these four scenarios, I view, I think we all view as a starting point. More work to be done. We look forward to working together with City Council and getting the best scenario for our stakeholders, realizing it's difficult decisions to be made, but we'll make those tough decisions and move forward.
Great. Well, with that, we are adjourned. City Council's next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on September 12th, 2023 at 4:00 PM in City Hall and Council Chambers. And while everyone's packing up, just a quick reminder that the city will host the MW Thornhill statue unveiling on Saturday, August 19th at 10:00 AM at the Fifth Street Roundabout. We hope to see you all there.